Good afternoon and welcome to our December 14th Planning Commission meeting. We will call the meeting to order and again, per the Governor's executive order, we do have members participating electronically. So we have Mr. Chase Salas and Mr. Ronnie Martin electronically and we have all the rest of our members either present or almost here. We have one on the way and we will have, thank you very much, 100% participation by the Planning Commission in all three of these sessions. So, we are going to hear today, yay! We're going to hear today from Mr. Darren Gore from the Water and Sewer, I know that's not what we call it.
That's Water Resources.
And so we're all very excited to hear about this. Lots going on in this department that we need to know about and we appreciate you taking your time today to be with us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm, you know, I try to keep a balance here of keeping it interesting and informative and I try not to get too technical, but in certain instances when you're talking about sewer allocation and the rationale behind the kind of the formulas that you're following, I've got to get a little bit technical. Hopefully I keep it, you know, simple enough that everybody, I get lost in it sometimes, so if you get lost, don't feel bad. Just ask questions if you want to. So, down here in this, let me see if I can get a little laser pointer going here. Yeah, okay. So over here, I did a little play on Winston Churchill's comments about Soviet Union back in the 40s, you know, he talked about a mystery wrapped in a riddle inside an enigma, right? So this is kind of what we're talking, a flush wrapped in a season inside a rainstorm. So that's my, that's my, you know, sewer humor, if you will. So, really, just to go over the basics and so I'm going to try to go through just a little bit of a, you know, kind of go behind and talk about the basics and then, you know, how we came up with the ordinance and then kind of what we're moving towards in our assessment. The ordinance does require that we have an annual report. I plan on delivering that to the Council at their January workshop. So this, the numbers aren't all filled in. I'm giving you more, again, the rationale, the analytical thinking behind what I'm doing so that when the report comes out, maybe, you know, you've got a little bit of a head start on when you see the numbers, you know, some of them may make more sense to you. So inside the fence, I'm calling this our Water Resource Recovery Facility, this is the bucket, this is where everything's moving. Outside the fence, we've got pump stations, pipes and manholes and I'm stealing this, a lot of this from ADS, who was our flow monitoring consultant. But these are the pipes or the straws flowing to the bucket. I mean, this is what takes everything from our home and gets us to the treatment facility, all right? We call those outside the fence. I gave this to the Home Builders Association last year and everyone seemed to really like it, but, so you've got pipes, right, and these pump stations that convey raw sewage. So they are expandable, you can make bigger pipes and you can build bigger pumps. It's expensive to do that. It conveys everything to the wharf. It's expandable as well, you can keep making it bigger. It's also very expensive. We expanded it in 2017 for just over 40 million when you add all the different components. We did, we did that in several phases. And this is where we run into the issue of Murfreesboro, right? We've got the West Forkstones River. That is not expandable. That size is what it is and there are certain, we call it permit limits, that TDEC, Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, they do a study and they say that the river can accept this much of our contamination or pollution. Now, I know that there's been, there's a big paradigm shift here. Back in the late 90s, I went back and reviewed about 20 years' worth of data. We were a pollutant, I mean, we were hurting the river. We were not meeting our permit limits, we were putting too much of an oxygen demand into the river, too many solids, too much ammonia. But when we got this plant expanded in 2001, we flipped it. We flipped, I mean, we are putting in very high quality effluent and I would argue that we are no longer hurting the stream, we are actually helping the stream, our treatment. Technology is that good. But it's only been for the past 20 years. Part of the challenge that I face is there's that legacy mindset from regulators that have been in the business for 20, 30, 40 years and I don't know if they'll ever be able to see something from a plant going into the river as being better for the river. So, I've got a, I'm trying to find minds that may be more, you know, open to this idea that we are actually beneficial when we discharge to the river. So, this is, I'll go around robin here, these three colors, so we have, I'll talk more about this graph, but the wharf is that little picture up there and we've really, everything feeds to three main pump stations. The gold area, that's our main lift station and you can see those areas in gold that go to that main pump station. We've got the overall creek pump station, the green area goes to it. And then the red area, that's the Southwest Regional Pump Station that we just built back, that was about five years ago. All the red area flows to it. So all of those things ultimately go to our plant. This is a little bit of a more technical diagram of all, how those basins flow. You can kind of see those three, everything feeds to those three pump stations on the top, but the way we look at our system configuration and the way we monitor flow through the system, we have to do some, one flows into the other, flows into the other, so there's some actual subtraction going on here so you account for what, you know, upper reaches of the basin flowing into downstream reaches. I just bring this up to show you that we kind of know, you know, we know how our system Back to this. So, so in two, between 1999 and 2005, that's when we did a lot of studying to size some large interceptor pipes. We made the specials, a lot of special sanitary sewer assessment districts were created in that six-year timeframe and, you know, it was just a different, development was in a different density back then. We just didn't quite have as many townhomes or apartments. So, this is what really prompted us to get into that sewer allocation when we saw that we were, we were seeing higher densities than what we had originally designed the pipe sizes for back in this, the late 90s, early 2000s. So example here for overall creek, you know, we said we were going to have about 42,000 single-family units. Buchanan was about 8,500, Salem 67, 82, Rockvale 30, just over 3,800, Lidle Creek Basin was over 31,000. So this is, and when you look at the pipes, if you take their total acreage that were in those watersheds and then you divide that total acreage by the number of units that we anticipated, these are the kind of densities you see here, right? 2.7, 3.5, 3.8, 2.7, 3.3. So, I'm kind of setting the table here again. Then we said, "Let's do a little deeper dive" and so we really went in, we looked at the Salem, the cool thing about the Salem barfield area was, we did a pretty comprehensive study back in 2000. This was the master plan, there wasn't anything cooked to sewer necessarily back in 2000, so it was a green field development, you know, let's say. And we knew we had almost 1,800 acres and that 6,782 single-family units and that's roughly the 3.8, on average, 3.8 units per acre. So fast forward to 2019, we did an as-is kind of assessment, it's like, okay, what's built out in this basin over the last 19 years and how much area has it consumed in that green field? So we saw that we had developed 866 acres in the Salem corridor and we had allowed almost 3,700 units in there and that's 4.3 versus the 3.8 that we designed it for. So we're 12% more, we've allowed 12% more density, right, than what we had originally designed for, which is fine, but this is where it gets a little bit, you know, what's remaining. So now what's remaining is the 922 acres and we got the 31, roughly 3,100 single-family units. That takes us down for the remaining acreage, we got to get to 3.4. So we go from 4.3 to 3.4, that's a 21% reduction and that's when we kind of said, "Oh, you know, we're going to consume or over, if we keep going at 4.2 or 4.3, there's going to be some property that's not, we're just not going to have the capacity to serve it." And it kind of gets into that philosophical discussion, is first come, first served? Or do you want to try to be more of a, you know, uniform distribution and give everybody the same density? We've always practiced first come, first served. If you're first through the gate, you get what you get and you, and if we like the development and like the plan, if you're at eight units per acre or nine units per acre, you get it. It just means what you're doing ultimately is there's going to be land that, I don't see you're taking that from, it's just, they may not have the opportunity in the future to develop because we'll be at capacity. And so, kind of to confirm that trend, we didn't really go into each basin, but we looked at the building permit data. And this is through, this is from 1990, so this is almost 30 years through 2018. I haven't updated it this past year. I don't think it's going to change the trend that much, but we've had over the last 20 years or 28 years, a 38% decrease in detached single-family unit permits. So, on the other side of that coin, we've had a 26% increase in multifamily and a 12% increase in attached homes, right, so condo, or townhomes. So that kind of validates, say, "Well, we've probably given 12% increased density across the city when you look at this overall building permit trend," right? So that's kind of a, we've kind of, okay, if we let it happen in Salem, we've probably, you can extrapolate that to say it's probably happened all over the rest of the city as well, you know, without going in and looking at each one. Now, you know, that's what this annual report is doing, is I'm trying to go into these different basins and actually look at those now to see, to see, do more of an analysis. So, this was the resolution, you know, this is where we came up and said, "Okay, if we, so our target now is 3.4 units per acre." So we said 2.5 commercial, 3 units per acre for low density and somewhere, you know, this is where the planning aspect of it comes in and it's hard to apply these percentages without a map or me giving you a bit better, more information. But you can see, we assumed that 35% would stay commercial, 2% industrial, 40% low residential, 11% medium, high density. Now, all I can tell you is when these, like, when you multiply 35% times 2.5, add it to 2% for, that equals that 3.4. So I'm just kind of doing a weighted average on here to say. So if we give medium density residential, if we give 20% at 7 units per acre, then you're going to have to, again, you're going to have to counterbalance that somehow. And that's where I know that right now, it's not, there's not a good mechanism for you all to see how these percentages are playing out on a month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter, year-to-year basis and that's where I think we've got to do better reports and give you better tracking metrics so that you can see what's happening here. Mixed use is kind of a, I put in there, that's a mix between low and medium residential and then the college and university, that's a little bit of a mix between the commercial and industrial. Parks, 3.5%. Anyway, I'll just bring that up to remind you that to get to a target of 3.4, you have to apply these densities to a certain percentage and if you go over on those percentages, if you're above 3.4, so the medium density and the high density, if that goes over 14% of total, you're, again, it's kind of taken away from, I mean, you got to, got to counterbalance that somehow. So, let me just talk about flows to the water resource, this is kind of getting more into the analysis now. First part of the presentation, maybe that's the history of how we got to the sewer allocation. Now, I'm giving you kind of the hope to give you a better vision of what we're doing. Yes, sir?
So, quick question. So, with respect to this resolution and these percentages, I probably should have asked this back when we passed it, but this is specifically, are you making any consideration what is already there in a particular area with respect to these percentages or is this strictly these percentages are applicable to going forward?
They're just applicable to going forward.
Okay.
Yeah. We...
I'm with you.
Okay, got it. So flows to the wharf and this is where it gets into this, I don't want to lose anybody here, but this, I'll try to keep, I think, I think I can, I think I can keep it simple here.
Put it on the bush.
Well, okay, so what you have here on the x-axis, that's time. So this is about a full year worth of flow coming to the plant. It's actually, looks like part of 2018 through 2019. And the 40 MGD is 48 million gallons a day, that's just a threshold at our plant that we, or actually the main lift station. You see these big spikes? So in the summertime, I kind of drew in this green dashed line to say, you can just tell, "Look, that's, that's, the flows are down" and it's, that's because it's summertime. When it rains, the plants are sucking the water up, the sun is evaporating the water. You can have a three-inch rain event in the summer and man, it's almost like the next day or two days, you didn't even know it rained, right? Because everything has just sucked that water, everything's blooming, growing, it's wonderful. And our sewer system doesn't see that extraneous water getting into it. So it's, so when you look at our system in the summer, green is good and yellow is fair and we're in great shape and you think, "Wow, we're, no problems," right? Well, when you look at the wintertime condition, like this rain we had last night, I think, I don't even think we had under two inches, I think, I don't think we had two, do we have two inch, I don't, an inch and a half maybe? I can't remember, I didn't really look at it, but it wasn't going to be much, but there's water everywhere, right? Now you're relying on the clay to infiltrate it, nothing's growing, everything's dormant, so that water just sits there, runs off and a lot of it does get in the sewer system. As much as we combat that and try to avoid that, there's just hardly any way to totally prevent it. So then when you look at our winter condition, here you go, red, pink, pink is surcharged. We've got one green, that's good, a little bit of yellow, but this deep plus 24, that's saying that the pipe, we've surcharged two feet above our pipe. So it's actually backed up in the manhole and we've almost got a pressurized system at that point. It's still flowing by gravity, but everything's starting to kind of back up on us a little bit. So this is a condition we have to, our pumps are sized to try to handle these big flows even though it may only occur four months out of the year. This is kind of our, so, an important thing, the reason these things are numbered, there's 18 of these basins, we call them MF01 through MF18, they are flow monitors. We have this little deal here and I think, is it, is it the Sharknow, Marshall? Anyway, this may be an old version, anyway, we, you know, that's what ADS does for us, they put them in these manholes, it measures the flow through the pipe, it measures if the level in the manhole, if it surcharges and whatnot and that's how we kind of know what the wet weather flow is, or even the dry one, just we just know what the flow is going through that point. So you can almost take these 18 basins and this is kind of going to be what the report wraps itself around because that's how we, we know how much water people use in this basin and we can say, "Hey, that's kind of the summer flow," right? Whatever, anybody pulls through their water tap, I mean, 95, 99% of that goes back to the sewer. Then you've got this winter flow condition, you say, "Okay, this is how much that's infiltration and inflow, extraneous water, if you will." So, I was going to do a little example, kind of look at this deal here. So I've highlighted, you can see MF07 goes into MF05 and then 04 and 05 go into 1 and then 1 goes into that main lift station. So I'm going to give a little bit of a table here. This is where math comes into play. So, oh, this is kind of the depiction of it. So MF07 and 05, you can kind of see how they go in together and everything ends up kind of getting to the plant. So that's kind of geographically how this schematic over here, what it really kind of looks like. All right. So this is what I was talking about, the water usage. I multiplied that by 1.3 because we do have a, you know, people use more around lunchtime and around dinnertime, so I've added a little peak on there. I know what the, so this is what goes through the water meter, this is what we measure through that flow meter, this plus this, so we've got a total flow. Then we come in and we say, "Hey, how much is the pipe capacity?" We know what our pipe capacity, so we know what, we've got a remaining capacity. So this is just this minus this equals the remaining capacity. So we're determining the excess capacity here. So step three, we're going in and we're saying, "Let's just," so that capacity can be converted to single-family units. We say 260 gallons per day is equal to one single-family unit. So I've just taken this million gallons per day, divided it by 260, that says, "Hey, in these basins, we've got 538 single-family units available for serving that," you know, I'm just kind of calculating into this. Now, this is what we're going through right now. So even though we've got, we know how many connections we've got now, we've, at the Planning Commission and City Council, we've approved, right, a lot of plans that have not been built yet. And this was a lot of help with planning here, we have been going through and trying to determine, now these numbers are red because these are kind of, I just kind of, I don't know these numbers yet, we're still in the calculation process of determining these numbers. I'm supposed to get them by December 23rd. That's my deadline. So, and this is the unique thing about this number, right? How, how, and Sam, you guys helped me here, is a project approved for two years, if a project doesn't commence in two years, does it have to come back for reapproval? Is that something that's, is that a fact?
Yeah, so, it used to be 18-month window.
Right.
Now it's state-approved the besting law about five years ago that allows the plan to not move forward for three years. If they, if they hit a certain milestone, they get approved within that three years, then, then it's good for two years, it can be good for 10 years based on state besting law.
All right, so, okay, so I don't, that's, that's the part that's going to be kind of a gray area too, right? So what I told our guys to do, said, "Look, let's go back and give me everything that was approved back, it was some January of 2018." So basically, for all of 2018 and, yeah, 2018, 19 and 20, or did I do two years? I did two, oh, I'll double check that. So I went back and said, "Give me everything, maybe some January of 2018, four." And then let's go back another two, let's go back to 2015. So that number, I may have a number here that says, "Hey, if we want to approve it or if we want to tell everybody that's been approved since 2018, they're still, we've still got capacity to commit them, to commit or serve them." Or we may want to, if we still have, if we have the capacity to go back to everything that was approved since 2015. So there's going to be maybe a, kind of a determination of what feels right, you know, like is five years, if somebody had made a move on a project in five years and they come back and we don't have capacity, do we tell them no? Or do we say, "Hey, you can go back, but you're going to have to reduce your density now to the new ordinance requirements." So there's going to be a little bit of a analysis in there that I'll run through. But bottom line is we're trying to come back and say, "Hey, we've got so many single-family units less than committed, so this is really what we have. We've booked, we have this much capacity, we've booked this much, we've got this much really remaining." And that gets us back into, Jerry Lee is going through these 18 basins and he's telling me what he considers developable property, right? So, so it has an unimproved value on it from a tax assessor's coding or I said, "Hey, if it's, if it's even got a single-family unit on it, but it's five acres or greater, let's count that as a, as a potential redevelopment, you know, somebody may want to sell that and do something different." So he's giving me these acreages and then so you just back into it, right? Now you're saying, "Hey," again, these numbers are just made up right now. It may be more or less than that 3.4 that we were targeting in Salem, it may be 1.1, it may be 3.4, it may be more, it may be six per acre. That's what I'm trying to get to you all though is to say, what is the number in this basin, in this little area? What can we commit to and we know we're not overcommitting the sewer capacity? So, now I'm looking at the plant, so that's kind of like the straw, so we'll say that's the pipe assessment. Now you got to look at the wharf, overall capacity, that's basically these four, everything comes through these four flow monitors and through those three pump stations. It's a little bit of the same deal, we, step one, we're still looking at the overall flow, you know, 21.1. That does, and then we, then I went in and said, "What's, let me talk about a peak, a storm, I mean, a rain event." So all I did here is I took the storm peak, I took our infiltration inflow and I doubled it. And so I said, "Now, this is a, this is a total with a storm peak, if we have a three-inch, four-inch rain in February, you know, we just, we're not really worried about treating it so much, we're just trying to get it through the plant and let it, keep it from overflowing out of our system." And then I kind of looked at the dry capacity, I said, "Well, if we're rated for 20 and we know our dry capacity's 11.65, I've got 8.35 MGD remaining and that's equal to about 32,000 single-family units." And then I look at the wet condition, can I, can I take, can I get 32,000 single-family units through this if it's wet or during a peak storm? So we actually have a 60 MGD hydraulic capacity, we call it our wet capacity. Can't treat everything as great, but we have, we can actually pump it through the plant. So we have 20.1 remaining, if I look at the SFUs at 450 gallons per day, it says I can get almost 45,000. So really my limiting condition really is more of my dry weather, with that, which that's a good thing, in my opinion. We want to be able to handle those storm events, but the, so if we look at 32,000, and again, this is numbers made up, if we look at the overall city, if we've approved eight that we've committed to all the plans we've reviewed through 2018 or 2015, if we have 8,000 commitments that we've approved plans, then you just deduct that and we're at that 24,000. I've looked at our sewer connections, we're averaging about 2,300 sewer connections per year. That says we've got about 10, 10 and a half years left on our, at our wharf to serve the city. Again, so I've got to look at two conditions, I've got to look at what can the pipe convey and what is the density that's allowable through the pipe? And then, I've kind of done the analysis here, this is actually, well, except for this 8,000, I don't know what that number is. If that number is twice that, then, you know, if we've got 16,000 outstanding commitments, that means what? We've only got 16,000 remaining and if you're at 2,300 divided by 16,000, or 16,000 divided by 2,300, you're down into the seven to eight-year window of estimated years remaining. Yeah, I know. So, so these numbers, these numbers are important and that's why I think we've been working on those for months to try to see what that actual number is and I, like I said, we're going to try to give a break to say, "What's that number from 2018 to present and then what's that number from 2015 to present?" So we can kind of at least see, it may be that we're fine to serve everybody that was 2018 on, it may be tough to serve those projects between 2015 and 2018, don't know yet. But that's, that's the thinking or the rationale, the logic that we've been going through here. So that's really it. And like I said, I hope to have real numbers, so those tables will have all 18 basins, I'll look at each, each of the land areas that those, that we're measuring those flows from and again, we'll have a, an estimated life of the plant as well. Kind of makes sense, sorta, I know it's a lot. It's taken me, I'm glad I'm actually giving this presentation because it took me, you know, I was saying earlier, trying to put together a puzzle and you think you got all the pieces and then when you're putting it together, you're like, "Oh, wait a minute, I don't have that piece, I need to go," I mean, sometimes you're kind of creating the image of the, the final image and you don't really know what that looks like. So that's kind of what we've been doing. So I've got another month to really knock this thing out with a lot of help.
And so are you all still working with TBA or whoever?
TDEC.
TDEC, regarding, if there's anything further we can do with all of the process that you go through so that we can still put more in the river versus this 10 years that we're looking at now, if we don't do anything different here or is that all still to work?
Well, the answer is yes. I have... Well, the, the answer is yes. I've, I have monthly calls, and I've had it for the last three, I just had one last week. Her name's April Grippa. She is over permitting, she's over modeling, and she's over assessment, stream assessment. So I have been told she's the last, but she's, this is like, so, so when I became the director in 2012, April was about the fourth person that I've, you know, latched on to and, and just tried to train, yeah. And just, you know, said, hey, 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 we need to work something out here. I need you all to get a little more flexible on, on the way you, you frame these permits and, and look at my data. So I've, I've spent three Zoom meetings with her, and I kind of say, I've got a PowerPoint for her every time, like, listen, this is, this is what we're doing in the stream, and this is how healthy the stream is. Okay. This is, and I showed her this last one that we had last week. I showed her the graphs from 1998, 99, when we were operating horribly, and I had about four bench milestones. I said, look, in 2000, in July of 2000 is when we came online, all of our numbers just dropped. In 2013, we did plant optimization, and all of our, we started denitrifying at the plant. So all of our nutrient loads started to decrease substantially. Even in 2017, y'all may or may not remember this, General Mills started pumping their effluent over to Indian Hills Golf Course. And the Water Resources Department, we lost about, we're losing about a million dollars in revenue annually because of that, because it's not coming to our sewer, so we're not charging it. It's being land applied on the golf course. But what that did do is it dropped our phosphorus load by almost, you know, over 25%. So I showed, showed April the numbers when that happened, you know, the graph that said, hey, we were here, now we're here. And so I talked about getting credit for a, we don't have, we don't get credit for a reuse system right now. She's open to that. I talked about nutrient trading. If we do things with our stormwater system, if we can get nitrogen, total nitrogen, total phosphorus treatment through our ponds and through our infiltration trenches and through our bioretention areas, you know, can we get credit for that? If we're doing it in the stormwater, can we get credit at the plant and do a trading? And she was, she's been realistic and said, well, that, we're not, you know, we're not set up for that. And I just said, I, I get it, but, but April, we, we got to get there, right? I mean, it's other, other states, other communities are doing it. We got to get there. And she seems to be the first one that I've, I've talked to that is will, it's, it's just, I mean, hearing me. I hate to say it like that. A big epiphany moment was, I said, you know, April, when I really need the river is during the winter time, because I can get rid of a lot of reuse during the summer. Everybody wants it. I'm irrigating Old Fork Golf Course, I'm irrigating Siegel Soccer Complex, all, every business up and down. Med Center Drive is using it. I don't really need the river in the summertime. I mean, I need it, but I'm getting rid of a lot of water through irrigation. When everybody turns their irrigation systems off for the winter period, now I need the river. And I said, conversely, I really need a permit. I mean, how much water can I get rid of in the summertime because the plants are sucking it? They write their winter, the soil permit for winter conditions, when the soil's wet and nothing's growing. I said, no, 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 I need one written for when everything's growing and the heat's on, and I'm getting, I can really get rid of a ton. And she finally went, oh, she was like, the light bulb went off, like, oh, okay. You really need a land application permit written around summer conditions, and you really need an outfall MPDS permit written, written around the winter condition. And I said, yes, you got it. Perfect. And so, yes, I'm working very diligently, and I hope, I mean, I'm seeing some daylight for the first time in eight years. And so I hope that that comes to fruition. But we're going to be applying for our next permit application in the spring. And I'm going to ask for expanded, I'm going to ask for credit on some things, and then we'll see what they say. Yes, sir?
So, question back to your slide, with respect to a wet event and the capacity, you turn, I'm not sure exactly what it was, that you could flow that water through and put in the river.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't have to be treated, I guess, like, every day then, is that what you're saying?
Right. Well, it's very, so, so you just think about it. What's happening is, you're getting groundwater, rainwater, so it's diluting. So, so what's coming to the plant is not raw. I mean, it's, it's got sewage in it, but it's made up a lot of just rainwater too. It's more dilute.
So what I'm also hearing you say, is in my mind, before I walked in here, I'm, I'm like, all right, you know, we always, as, as a government body or constituents, you know, let's throw some money at it and solve the problem, okay?
Right.
So if we threw money at the pipe-sized capacity, or that's one piece of the puzzle. If we threw money at the water treatment plant, which you did in 2017, but it sounds like, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
It sounds like we could throw all the money at that if we want to, but until we get the issue with respect to how the volume amount that we can put in the West Fork of Stone's River, that, the, however much money we throw at each other, two issues, it doesn't really solve that problem. Is that a correct statement?
That's a correct statement. You've, you've, you've nailed it. At the end of the day, we have a very small receiving stream. Now, the other option, and I've told April this, I said, April, if we don't work this out, we got to start planning on running a pipe to the Cumberland.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's 40 miles, and I said, you know, and you talk about some throwing money at it, that's going to be some big-time money, and it may be something that this community decides it doesn't want to pay for. But I told her, I said, look, at the end of the day, I've got to come back to, you know, Plan Commission, the City Council, the citizens, the customers, and say, whether we're, if, if we're open for business, what is that going to cost? Because I, I do think, because I told them, I said, look, we're, I can see this community, it may, it may decide, hey, we want to keep growing, we're going to run, we're going to bypass Percy, we're going to bypass the West Fork River, bypass Percy Priest Lake and dump it in the Cumberland. And that'll be, I have, it's funny, because I have friends in the, in the water industry in Texas, and, you know, they're building reservoirs. I mean, they're, they've got billion-dollar, when you talk about the Dallas-Fort Worth area, they've got, their budgets are in the billions of dollars, you know, so that's not something we're used to talking about here. But if we really do want to see continued growth, that may have to be an option. We may have to slow down until we build it, but I'm telling, I, I, you know, I've, I'm being real with TDEC to say, look, if you say no more than go in here, we may, that may be an option that everybody wants to pursue.
Well, I mean, this is just one person's opinion, but I don't think that, as a planning commission, and if I was on the City Council, I don't think you could take an attitude or a decision, don't, I don't want anybody to take this wrong, that you're going to shut this thing down in eight years or 10 years. You've got to have a plan.
Right.
Beyond that point in time. And so if it is a 40-mile pipe to the Cumberland River, it's like, if that's the answer, if it doesn't sound, then we need to start, we need to start looking at that today and, of what does that cost? Are we going to have a sewer assessment for each developer that wants to go, especially if they want to go beyond the guidelines that you set here? I mean, we've got to have some ideas associated with how we're going to generate that money, because we don't want to be sitting here looking at each other in 10 years going, what we do?
Right. So, so I, so in 2012, when I became director, the big deal was to get the plant expanded at the 2017. So we got it done. So when we immediately got it done, I said, folks, we got to start planning for the next expansion today. Because I knew, like you said, when you see the growth numbers and the growth projections, we don't have time to say, okay, we've got the plant expanded, we've got time to kind of sit on our hindquarters and just kind of take a few years off and then start going back at it again. So we've been working, so when we got that plant expansion in 2017, we immediately started to, which kind of blows TDEC's mind. They're like, what are you doing?
Yeah.
They're not used to people doing that, right? Doing, looking at that.
If I'm hearing you correctly, even if we increase the capacity of the water treatment plant, that still doesn't.
That, that's right, because you're, you're right. Because what we did on this last expansion, the way we were able to get the expansion, is they actually didn't change what we could put in the river.
Okay.
We just treated it so much, but we proved that we were treating it so much better that we were putting the same, we call it mass, right? We were putting the same mass in, even though we expanded the plant by 50%. So we really didn't get a permit expansion for the river, but we just, we convinced TDEC that if we, we could expand the plant and still meet.
Right.
The previous permit conditions.
I mean, to ask all questions, but I, I want to understand this.
Sure.
You're doing good. Keep going.
Keep going.
Let people relax.
All right. So with the things that you're talking about needing credit for, though, that's all fine and good, but what are we, what are we talking about here? Are we talking about with respect to those credits and the changes that you are trying to get her to understand?
Yeah.
Is that a 10% growth, a 10% capacity more that, on your number that you, is it a 50% number? Or, because if it's just 10, then we've got to go a different direction?
No. We're, we're looking at going from adding, so we're at 24 MGD rated. I've got 20 in here, and that's a little bit of a, they, they rated us for 20 in the summer and 24 in the winter. So again, that was just kind of a math thing that I couldn't, I couldn't, anyway, it was, that was a very frustrating point of contention when we got our last permit expanded. But anyway, I'm trying to go to 32. So 24 to 32, so another 8 MGD. So, so that, that again, may add another 10 to 15 years on top of that.
Is it a 33% increase?
It's a 33%, yes.
Okay.
Right. That's what I'm asking for.
All right.
Now, don't, don't, don't.
You never answered that question, though.
Well, we're going to apply for the permit expansion here. I'm going to apply for the next permit in the spring, and if they tell me no, then I'll kind of know the answer.
And how long does that take to get an answer?
Uh, six months.
Okay.
Um, so, so we've done a lot of, we've done, we've done a wasteload allocation model. We've done, every year, we go do sampling for the bugs in the stream to make sure we're not, we have a very healthy stream as far as the macro, macro-bent thick communities. Anyway, they're just little mayflies and stuff like that. Now, keep in mind that, that we still have, and that's, a few years ago, we adopted design guidelines for step systems. So we are, we are, when I say shut down, shut it out, it just may be, you know, we still always have what CUD's been doing for the past 20 years in the county, where you have decentralized, you've just, you know, again, you don't get the density because you've got to put about, you know, if you have 100-acre development, you've got to dedicate maybe 10 acres of good soil. Now you got to have the good soil, and you got to, you know, design it properly. But you can still allow development to occur. It's just decentralized, and it has its own little treatment.
Sure.
System. So you're, but you're not looking at large hotel motels and things like the Avenue and things like, you know.
And you're going to have a lot more acres to be, be able to develop that just because you're using.
You are.
The landmass to make sure of the.
We've had a, we've had a struggle out there, if you know, on the east side of town, that Dill rushing Lyon property, there's about 600 acres there, that are, right now, we've, we've pretty much had them on a moratorium because our system wasn't sized enough to handle all that. So they're actually doing a, they're actually putting apartments, so it's multifamily, they're doing it all in a step system. So, you know, I don't want you to think that it's just, we're bad.
Yeah.
It's just going to be a diff, it would just have to be a different style of, of treating the, the waste stream.
Right. I, I just don't want us to be in position that we're.
I understand.
Not forward-thinking as to the alternatives. If that's, all right, the next 30% of development after 2025, got these step systems, you know, okay?
Well, yeah, and, and can I mean, interrupt you? So, so this, this, in 2011, we did an, an assessment on what it would cost to go to the Cumberland. And at that time, 2011, it was going to cost, you know, 100-plus million. It was going to be a big number.
Right.
And we decided, you know, we decided not to do it, right? And we've decided to, to expand our central plant here and, and work with TDEC to get our permit in, in the West Fork. And that was, we, we did it. My point being is I hope that technology here in the next 20 years, that we're treating it so well, then we can put it right back into a reservoir, that our water plant can pull it and use it for drinking water. And that's what grosses everybody out, right? That's when everybody says, oh, you know, you're going to do what with your effluent, and you're going to use that for a water supply source now? But that's what everybody out west is doing. They're recharging their aquifers, or they're refilling their reservoirs with effluent. And then you've closed the, then, then you have yourself, you've, you've closed the loop.
Right.
And so now, you can grow as much as you want to grow because your, your effluent is feeding your water supply, which is feeding, you know, you've just, you've, you've just, you're, you know.
That takes a lot of.
You're circular.
Yeah.
Feeling the flow.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
How much can be gained by, I know we've been, you all have been doing a lot of rehabbing of old silver lines that's been used to the I-9. That's still, the I-9's still a big number.
That's the first thing that TDEC wants you to demonstrate, that they're saying, hey, hey, is before we give you more capacity to treat and whatever, how much are you spending on avoiding water getting in your system? And so we've had a very aggressive, really since I got, you know, I came to the city in '05, that was one of the, in '07, we had a rehabilitation, I called it a rehabilitation business plan. Susan didn't like me to call it a business plan, but it was, I, I considered it a bit, because I was saying, hey, this just, you know, the, the money we expend on this justifies itself by eliminating water getting in the system, so we can allow new growth. So it did have a, there was a budget, there was a cost, but there was that benefit. And so when I showed TDEC what we're doing on rehab, they're like, oh. They, they say, you're doing more on your rehab than most communities that we've got a consent decree against. So we've not been in a consent decree. Nobody's told us we had to do it. We've done it voluntarily for the last 13 years, pretty aggressively. And so TDEC, if we hadn't have been doing that, then I don't think TDEC would be talking to us as much about these other solutions. But it's absolutely foundational.
And we've got a lot more to go.
Yes. Oh, no, we're, well, that's, man, it's just, I, it's like, it's like putting the finger in, I mean, as soon as you plug this and this, well, there's a leak over there. I mean, this is like, this is like a, how do you say it? You've got pipes in the ground that are 50, 60 years old. We're replacing, we, we try to replace at least 1% to 2% of the system each year or repair it, so that you've got about a, a 50 to 100-year pipe cycle, pipe life. That's kind of a big, broad target. But theoretically, if you replace 2% per year, your system never gets over 50 years old in age. So that's kind of what we're doing.
So is there any advantage to working with other cities to build that part of the pipeline?
Yeah, well, I mean, yes, I mean, if Smyrna, and, I mean, I guess we'd go through Smyrna and Laverne and Antioch, but I guess, Laverne actually sends their sewage to Metro Nashville, so they've got that huge Hurricane Creek Pump Station. So the only, only ones that may be, although Laverne may want to put, I mean, the answer is, there's always is yes. I mean, if we can find partners to do that, it would be great.
Laverne's is raw sewage?
Laverne's, Laverne's, Laverne does not have a wastewater treatment plant. They send everything to a pump station that gets pumped to Metro's wastewater plant. Smyrna has a wastewater plant, but they're dealing with the same kind of, they're, they're dealing with the same kind of issues that we are. They would probably be a likely partner if we did it. I just don't, I've worked with, I'm from Smyrna, so I can say this, but I've worked with Smyrna a few other things, and sometimes they don't, they don't jump on board too quick.
Where are they coming in, is that part of the?
It's Harts Branch. I mean, they've, they've got, they've got a, they've got their, their, their wharf is right off of Sam Ridley Parkway, across from the golf course there, and they go right into, so it goes to Harts Branch, which feeds into directly into the lake, Percy Priest.
Okay. Aaron, could you compare and contrast us to, and I will call them competitors with some of our peer cities, Memphis, Nashville, Knoxville, Chattanooga, Clarksville, and then maybe also throw in Franklin, who's similarly situated than us as far as their opportunities for disposal, and how TDEC has looked at those larger cities and the struggles or the challenges that Franklin and Murfreesboro have.
So Memphis dumps into the Mississippi, Nashville's the Cumberland, Chattanooga's the Tennessee River, Knoxville's the Tennessee River, Clarksville is the Cumberland. So TDEC, I hate to say it this way, they So, TDEC, I hate to say it this way, they just, hey, drop the solids out, do some minor treatment and you can discharge it to these large streams. They don't see those rivers, those large rivers, as really having any assimilative constraints. So, that's why you see those, with us, we're the largest city in Tennessee that has a nutrient limit in our permit. And when I say nutrients, it's nitrogen and phosphorus. Franklin has that, Columbia is gonna deal with that, Spring Hill, any city that you see that, you know, the Duck River, the Harpeth, the Stones River, any river that size, you know, some people call them creeks maybe, they are gonna be running into the same issue. So, I have, I have really tried to, you know, with April at TDEC, you know, April, this, we're the tip of the spear here, right? I mean, we, if we don't work it out, you're gonna run into the same issue with a lot of these other communities. So, we need to come up with a good, solid plan moving forward so that you can ultimately create a permit that's multifaceted, that can deal with these other cities as well. So, I'm trying to impress upon her that this is really crafting something that will help the state and some of those other cities. Is that, is that kinda where you want me to head there? Okay.
But if it sounds, once that, if you go out one year, unless we have technology that's gonna have to deal with
Yes.
And you're really fine and not on your side because the more time we have, the more we can analyze the ability.
Right, I got you. Yeah, I agree. I mean, it, I guess I was more optimistic about us getting into the potable, I know Portland, Tennessee is really trying to push to get into a direct potable reuse, they call it.
What is the cost of something similar to that, if you call it a project?
That's, that's what Gwinnett County just about paid. They just about had to get their water to drinking quality to put it back in Lanier. It was almost-
Take it back out.
Yeah, they, they put it in the lake Lanier and then they turned it around and put it, so they do use the lake as a buffer, but they did have to treat it to a very high degree, almost drinking water quality and, and, yes, I mean, their plant is several hundred million dollars.
So, is that what they're saying?
Yeah, I, yes, I, yeah, you know, if we don't get a, a, now, I'll say this, them being the first one, they're probably paying a premium and they're gonna be, have put a lot more money into it to satisfy a lot of redundancy that Georgia EPD wanted. My hope is that, again, we're not first, we're coming in after several others out west have done it. Because the west, they, they use the reuse system, it's, I call it reverse-o world because out west, they're using reuse water to offset their drinking water needs, right? So, they don't wanna pump good water that they, out of the lake that they can use for drinking water to go irrigate. So, they use their reuse system to irrigate, so they save their drinking water. We're in the reverse situation. We're trying to offset what we're putting in the river. So, our reuse system is to not, we've got plenty of water for drinking purposes, we're actually just trying to offset the flow that's going into the river by irrigating. So, not many people are in our situation like that. But, I'm hoping that out west, they do continue to drive that technology to a cheaper and cheaper situation so that we're not looking at a billion dollar investment or requirement. And, you know, maybe half of that, but hey, half's a lot better than, you know. But, that may be twenty, you know, if we can, and again, I'm trying to push it forward, get as many years as we can to continue business as usual, but there may be, there may become a hard stop where, yeah, we're just gonna have to either run a pipe to the Cumberland or if the state lets us do direct potable to close it out, to, to, to just close the loop, we may have to go there. And that'll be a big price tag either way we go.
Darren, let's talk then about extensioning that to the future land use plan, having the information that we have on sewer limitations up this group a little bit about how you see the future land use plan and maybe even a basic by basic analysis, how we convert that into uses which turns into sewer land.
Well, so, so, again, there's two, you know, how quickly do you wanna fill up the bucket if we have so many units remaining? The more you allocate sewer to, the quicker that that, that capacity at the bucket will fill up versus going out and you already have an existing limitation with the pipe sizes and pumps. I mean, we know we're filling the bucket up, that's probably gonna happen in, you know, ten plus year, you know, ten to fifteen years, let's say. Do we really wanna go make a big investment in upsizing a pipe or upsizing a pump to just get more density in one of these eighteen areas? I mean, you know, we probably just wanna, when I see future land use map, I just say, hey, you know, what, what's this, what's the density that's currently capable of the infr- and it's do, you know, do a cost benefit and say, hey, we really, really want this development and we think it's worth going out and upsizing this pump or upsizing, even though it's gonna go to the bucket and we're filling the bucket up, but we still think that it's a plum of a project and we're willing to upsize the pipe and the pumps to get it there. So, that's always on the table. We can all, like you said, always upsize that, it's a matter of dollars. And is the, is the development or the project, does it, does it create such a, you know, does it create such revenue or such
Benefit.
benefit to the city that we, you know, the jobs or, or, you know, if it's a big industry that comes in that uses a lot of water and we say, well, we want that, that corporate, you know, we want that industry here, where we just have to, you know, we can always find a way to get it to the plant, it's just a matter of dollars.
So, one last question. If you get, if you get this approval through TDEC and it does get to the thirty-four MGD, will not these numbers change with respects to the resolution piece, with respects to the sewer capacity, or that's not the way we look at it?
Well, the, the density stuff, you have to kinda remind yourself that the density really is a, the limiting factor is the pipe sizes that we built back in nineteen ninety-nine and oh-five. So, we get a bigger bucket, but if we don't increase, if the straws going to the bucket are the same size, we still kinda have those density issues on us.
All right.
So, just help me understand how, on this one, how we came up with that allocation of that two-point water requirement, or it was, how come in the Central Business District in Lakewood, there's no limit? Why is it we can do that, or is that because that's what we want and that's where we want developments?
That's, that's, yes, number two, what you just said. We thought that to incentivize bringing things into the core or into a certain area, that it would, the benefit was an inherent benefit that we just knew it would provide. More walkability, less, you know, maybe traffic on, or less burden on the schools and the parks, more of a commercial nature or just, again, so that was kind of a, there wasn't, there wasn't much science or math behind that. It was really more of a, let's make this a, an attractive deal to try to create, incentivize people coming back into the city, center of the city.
But I do think that's a very important thing for us to know and understand, that that there is no limit on that. And now that we see all of this and everything that went into all those difficult areas, that, you know, that's their true incentive of their, for developers in the downtown area. And we've got to realize that that's something that the city's looking at and wants and council obviously are putting in, everybody's looking for, and, you know, I think that says a lot.
Darren, I think you'll, that the, what resources department or this probably the city council thing, where you're incentivizing people to put in step system?
Well, so, I've had this conversation with a couple of council members. If we don't accept, so, so we have, our step system design criteria allows for a little bit more density, right? So, because we, I think, Marshall, help me from wrong, is we allow, is it point two gallons per day per square foot versus CUD allows point one five gallon per day per square foot through their drip field? So, we allow a little bit more flux rate through our soil system. State says point two five, so we're still kind of conservative, we're still under the So, that's somewhat of an incentive, I think, for people to request annexation so that we get them in the city limits even though they're a step system. I've had some conversations with some folks that they don't really think that water resources or Murfreesboro should allow step systems in the city, and that is absolutely fine. They'll just go to CUD and CUD will serve them. So, I mean, if we decline and say, no, we don't want you, or to our rolling stock services, it's gonna be too much of a burden for the city to provide city services to your location. They do, they can go to CUD and CUD will serve it, but they'll be a little less dense than if the city served them. You see what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, there's not gonna be a prohibition, I mean, if we say no, it doesn't mean that that property is not gonna be able to move on it. They're just gonna have to go ask CUD to be the service provider versus the city.
I think there's some merit though, you could, number one, the city doesn't have the capital cost associated with putting it in.
Right.
And then, we're not, we're not affecting the sewer capacity, so that's, that's two positives.
Right.
And then the third positive is if we do take it over, sure, we've got the maintenance piece associated with it, but you're also gonna generate hopefully revenue associated with the step system.
Oh, yeah, we, our rates will cover our operation and maintenance costs.
Wow.
Yeah, but you're right, no capital cost, that capital gets basically transferred to the department
Wow.
and we have to depreciate it, but we don't, don't incur cash outlay.
Correct.
Yeah.
And another question on the, you mentioned the Indian Hills, Thorpe's and General Hills. So, when they started doing that and just lost all that revenue
Mm-hmm.
Does that though then open up capacity?
It does, yes, absolutely.
And allow for, you know, you can then add back in
Right.
over time, you might get some of that revenue back.
Yes, that's when the next conversation I'm gonna have with April. The great thing is that happened in twenty seventeen, so I've got three stream assessments prior to twenty seventeen and I've got three stream assessments after twenty seventeen. So, I've got this nutrient load without the help of the Indian Hills situation and I've got a nutrient load after the fact with the help. And I'm gonna try to say, look, the stream was just as healthy with that much nutrient pre-Indian Hills as post, so can I get credit? You know, can I, can I take that, that difference and can you let me have it through new growth? So, those are the kinda things I'm trying to, and as I'm talking to April, a lot of that's coming to mind, like, hey, I need to really ask for this credit and say, and part of it too is, do I need to go buy, does the department need to go buy another six hundred acres of farm to basically just put a bunch of-
Make it come.
Put a, well, I mean, yeah, or put a bunch of irrigators out there. I did talk to my, I talked-
Make it that direction.
I talked to, yeah, make it that direction, yeah, yeah, start going up the east fork, right? We, I talked to my assistant plant manager the other day, because I'd noticed that we didn't seem to get as much reuse this past few months and we've had some equipment problems out at the farms. And, but he's talking about one of those big pivot systems.
Right.
He said that that may be, may get rid of about three times more of the water than what we've been using and I'm like, do it. I mean, it's a, it's a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, but I'm like, let's go get it and let's just see what it can do. So, that, and I talked to April about that. April, if I need to go buy, if I need to go buy four or five hundred more acres to allow for the next plant expansion, we need to go find four or five hundred more acres to see where we can start doing this. Because they are open now to crediting us for that type of land application, which as before, several years ago, they're like, well, you get credit because you're not putting in the river, so you kinda get de facto credit because you're offsetting the mass on your property, so, but you're not gonna get a credit on your permit. And so, I've been arguing with them about that.
Have you got to the point where you have had any issues with respects to redevelopment of a property that you have put, exposed that land to the reuse water? You follow in front of say, like, of course, Florida property would be a good example. You're, you know, we're spraying there, but that hasn't been redeveloped. You follow in?
Yeah, yeah, no, we haven't, no, and we really aren't, we aren't spraying on the Hoard property and that's-
Well-
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, they, anyway. So, yeah, so, no, we have not, like, but I'll say the Jordan Farm, once Cherry Lane goes-
Correct.
Once it goes through the middle of the Jordan Farm, that property is gonna be to, to-
Have a higher, better.
Yeah, have a higher and better use than us out there spraying it the whole time, so.
But that shouldn't cause any issues
No, no. We, no, we, we've got standing hay farm, standing hay contracts on both the farms. They, they get three or four cuttings of hay and they're feeding cattle with it and so, no, the soil is fine, there's not any issues with the soil. It's not, we're not contaminating, we're not gonna be a, what do you call it, a super fun site or anything.
Yeah, okay. Sorry for all the questions, but I-
No, I, I think, I think the questions are awesome.
Yeah, it's, well, well-
Maybe I think, you know, just following from our conversation last week about the constraints. We can see that water is a, as a resource will constrain us. We talked about land being our ultimate constraint, but water may become a constraint long before land is, and I think Darren helped us with that today. So, looking at the future land use map and the constraints we have, the other thought we need to have as a planning commission is vision. Darren talked a little bit about this, but, you know, how do we see Murfreesboro grow if we're constraining based on where we're at today and right now, we've gotta move forward with that idea, that what does the next five to ten years of Murfreesboro growth look like? And how do we set that vision? And how, those are public policy issues that will affect, you know, how we use that resource, what benefit it has for the community and what decisions this body and the back end council will have to make based on the vision that we set as a community. So, it's, it's pretty heavy stuff and it's, it's a heavy lifting, but I think, I think we're gonna have to do it to be able to, you know, progress the community for the next five to ten years. And then let Darren and our resources team work the wastewater disposal issue so that we can get some clarity on that as soon as practical. I would say I don't see Murfreesboro with the future without some wastewater disposal opportunities, whatever those might look like, and those opportunities obviously have dollars on the tax bill. I think, I think it's important, us lovely, but I think reasonably, you know, Murfreesboro's a good regional economic engine because of the transportation facilities and, you know, the synergies that we have working right now, I really can't see it being beneficial to the community or to the region for us to shut down or slow-stick the growth that we go just to step systems on the outskirts of our community. And I think, I think it's that important decision for, really for Middleton City.
I don't disagree. If you were to put a number on population, have a permanent, for what permanent to see right now, where would that be?
Is that my question?
Yeah, so, you know, the number of about five thousand per year has been pretty consistent for us, I think, for the next foreseeable future, especially considering, you know, some of our sewer now, sewer alternative, that's probably a good number for the next few years. Do we constrain it beyond that? You know, not yet, but I think- You know, not yet, but I think possibly we would have to constrain those out here growth numbers. And really, the, the hard thing for us is we have to constrain, I think, some of the more desirable types of, of land use, the commercial, the, the office and the industrial just because we don't have a place for their disposal and a lot of those are not suitable for sale. So, you know, it really changes the vision or the direction of the city, you know, beyond that five to 10-year window.
Darren, do you have a more?
No, 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 I'm just trying to, you know, I, I just didn't, you know, I thought to myself back in 2011, do I want to be the guy that runs and spends $100 million to Cumberland? And this is a really, it is a resource. I mean, during the summertime, it really is a hot commodity, the reuse system. Everybody wants it. The problem is, is it turns into that waste product only during about a four, four and a half month window. So the real question to me is how do you keep it from becoming this waste product or how can you get rid of it when it really is that waste product in that winter period? And I just kept thinking, man, by the time we get this thing built and all the way there and spend all that money, technology may be here where we can close the loop and everybody's going to go, who's the idiot that ran all this, you know, that ran the water, this, you know, to the Cumberland?
Hundred million dollars.
Hundred million dollars to bring it in, we need it back here, you know, we need this stuff, because we're really treating it, like I said, I've, I've drank it and I, and I don't have any problem drinking it. It's not, it's, you know, we, I do that to let everybody, because I know it's the yuck factor, that toilet-to-tap term, but it really is, it's, it's not what we were putting in the river back in the 80s and 90s and 70s. It really is high-quality H2O, to steal another water boy line.
Good job.
Well, I wasn't drinking gallons and gallons of it, I would say the sip or two. I still think that, I still think that, that closing the loop ultimately, if we look at, if we get, if we get the irrigation, if we can use some of it to blend for, for supply, I mean, I think it's, you're going to be looking at a, a, a large toolkit and get, use portions of the bigger, of several tools to get there.
If nobody has any other questions or any other business, I think we're, we have certainly learned a lot. This is just a huge help for us in the job that we do as planning commission members. And so, again, we thank you Darren for your time, all your work, putting together your presentation, putting the pieces of the puzzle together, we appreciate it. I know there's so much more we could learn about it, but I think it helps us just to know that this is a huge part of what we need to be thinking about with every decision we make in our meetings. And, you know, I can certainly say before, a couple of years ago when we first had this meeting, I had no clue. You know, I thought that every developer, as long as they could go out there and put in more pipes and more, we didn't care, you know, I just had no clue. So I really appreciate y'all explaining how it all works. There's always more behind the scenes that we don't know and it, it certainly affects the decisions that, that we're making and so I appreciate having the education to hopefully make some better decisions. So we do have another meeting this week. We will be right back here Wednesday at 1 o'clock, right? So we'll see the planning commission back here Wednesday at 1:00. And if there are no other questions and no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.